Good evening.
I'm not gonna say anything.
Uh, welcome to the June eleventh, two thousand twelve Planning Commission meeting for Fayetteville of Arkansas. Um, I'd like to remind everybody to turn your cellphones to silent and if anybody needs a hearing device, just talk to somebody in staff and they'll hook you up with that. Mr. Garner, would you call the roll?
Cave.
Present.
Hoskins.
Here.
Chesser. Pennington. Honcho.
Here.
Cook.
Here.
Winston.
Here.
Bunch.
Here.
Noble.
Here.
We have one item on the consent agenda, that's the approval of the minutes from the May twenty-ninth meeting.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion to approve from Commissioner Cook and a second from Commissioner Cave. Mr. Garner, would you call the roll?
Cave.
Yes.
Hoskins.
Here. Yes.
Honcho.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
Winston.
Yes.
Bunch.
Yes.
Noble.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Onto old business, uh, we have a preliminary plat for Holcomb Heights. Mr. Fulter, would you give the report?
Sir, thank you. This item was on previous two Planning Commission agendas. They were still working with the urban forester through some details on that plan. They've worked through those, the urban foresters included her report and has recommended approval of that, and so that's why it's back on your agenda tonight. The property is at southwest corner of Weir Road and Salem Road. Uh, you may remember this from a rezoning proposal, uh, back in two thousand eleven, actually. This had been a, an approved planned zoning district with two phases. Uh, it was never constructed, that PZD approval expired, and so you look at a rezoning and the city council approved that rezoning to RSF eight in two thousand eleven. So this is the plating procedure for that piece of property. Uh, they are requesting seventy-nine residential lots and then one lot for detention, of course. For access management, they are providing, uh, a step out to the northwest, a connection to the south to Downstreet, which is an existing step out from Salem Meadows. They'll be connecting to Weir Road and to Salem, and then a step out to the west where Rupel Road, which is a prince of arterial is planned to be constructed at some point in the future. So they've complied with the access management standards and block length standards. For street improvements, uh, main item is realignment of Weir Road, as you can see on the site plan. Uh, this is really a repeat of the street improvements that we saw with the previous development. Uh, this is how we showed on our master street plan where Weir Road's to intersect and create a, a four-way intersection with Gypson Drive, and so that's been shown on your plans. Of course, when they reconfigure that and improve Salem Road, both of those will be to collector street standards and those would include bike lanes in this location. Uh, they'll provide a temporary turnaround in the right-of-way for Rupel Road, as well as an assessment for the future construction of half of that street. And then with the realignment of Weir, there are two existing residential driveways that will have to be extended to actually intersect with the new street will be built, and they'll be responsible for that as well. Parks Recreation Advisory Board recommend accepting money in lieu for this development, seventy-nine single-family units, the amount of seventy-five thousand eight hundred forty dollars prior to final plat approval. That staff is recommending approval at this level with conditions, there is one determination by the Planning Commission that is for street improvements, that's items A through G. Item two is access management requirements, and that's just a notice to the developer about access to collector or arterial routes. Uh, there are shared access requirements for lots fifty-six through sixty, and then direct access to Salem Road is prohibited since they have access to a lower classified street, that'd be the interior street, and then access in the future to Rupel Road, once it's constructed, would be prohibited for lots one and seventy-seven. Uh, and I mentioned the driveways having to be reconstructed to intersect the new section of Weir Road. I think the other conditions are straightforward, and I can answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fulter. Is the applicant present? You'd state your name for the record and tell us anything else about your project.
Jared Edmond-Jorgensen, associate, Jesse did a pretty good job of explaining all this. Uh, we read through the condition of approval, don't have any objections.
Excellent.
Got any questions, I'll be right over here.
Thank you. I'd like to open this up to the public, is there any member of the public that's here to speak to this issue? Seeing none, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the commission. Mr. Chair. Commissioner Hoskins.
Question for staff. Um, Jesse, whenever they redirect Weir Road to Gypson, there's a sliver of property there on the north side of, of Weir Road. Yeah, somewhere in there, there we go. Um, of course, by redirecting Weir Road, are we technically going to abandon the old part of Weir Road, and if that's the fact, how do those people, the property that, on the north side, how do they have access to Gypson? Or the revised Weir, or whatever you wanna call it?
The majority of that property between the relocated and old section of Weir Road will be under the ownership of this developer, and so that's why they're required to provide access through easements and through construction of those driveways. A small sliver of that, once vacated, would actually transfer to the properties that we're talking about, and so they'll be crossing their own property at that point. Um, there would just be a small piece of property, though, that will be under the ownership of this developer, north of the reconstructed section of Weir Road.
Okay, so the folks that own the property on the north side of the existing Weir Road will have access to Gypson, or the new Weir Road, whatever, which one everyone does, via access easement?
Access easement, that's correct.
And that's okay with those property owners, they've been, they've been spoken to about that?
Well, they're gonna be accessing the public street through a driveway in either configuration. It's just their driveway will be a little bit longer now.
Then this guy's sitting there driveway through somebody else's property?
Across an access easement, yes, from, uh, across an access easement to Weir Road, that's correct.
Okay, and those, those other folks up there, you've talked to them?
I have not spoken to them, they were notified, uh, of this proposal, yes.
Question for you. Have you spoken with those folks that own the property on the north side?
The owner right there, the Glenn's point now, and the actual subdivision owner, the same owner.
Take him?
So they own, they own both pieces of property?
Developer, developer owns this property also, it's developed in the subdivision.
Owns the property on the north side of the old Weir Road?
Yes, this, this property right here.
Then I guess that's settled, did it?
I'm pretty sure he doesn't mind.
Did you ask him if he minded?
Not good enough.
All right, uh, that's, I'll head, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Cave.
I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve preliminary plat one-two-dash-four-zero-ninety-nine nine-nine, finding an agreement with, uh, staff on, uh, condition number one, for street improvements.
Would I have a motion from Commissioner Cave and a second from Commissioner Hoskins, was it?
That's correct.
Further discussion. Mr. Garner, would you call the roll?
Cave.
Yes.
Hoskins.
Yes.
Honcho.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
Winston.
Yes.
Bunch.
Yes.
Noble.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item is administrative, item one-two-dash-four-one-four-four for Seabert. Mr. Garner, can you give the staff report?
Yes, sir. Uh, we have the property pulled up there on Google Earth, it's at thirty-seventy-eight North College Avenue, it's near Hobby Lobby and Fiesta Square, it's north of the intersection of College Avenue and Rolling Hills. Uh, it's a snow cone stand, it's, uh, to get your variance, it's also approximately four hundred feet away from Maggie Moose Ice Cream, we have that identified there with kind of the blue marker. In March of last year, the Planning Commission approved a conditional use permit for Shave the Planet, um, which permitted a snow cone stand to be on this property for a period of a hundred and seventy-five days. Uh, the ordinance allows for mobile vendors such as this to only be there for ninety days, and the applicant received that approval, um, last year, and then in spring of this year, they applied for a similar permit, and, um, at the meeting, uh, in the spring, the city attorney advised the commission that, you know, we should be processing these types of requests as a variance and not as a conditional use permit. So the applicant is now before the commission requesting to be open for longer than ninety days, and they're actually process, processing this, this as a variance request, and you'll see in your staff report, in order for the Planning Commission to grant a variance, there are certain findings that are required to be met for these types of requests, and one of the findings is that, um, the mobile vendor will be compatible and not detrimental to nearby property and will not adversely affect nearby businesses, uh, will foster an aesthetically appealing streetscape. Um, and one of the other findings is that the outdoor mobile vendor's presence for an extended period of time at one location will not create an unfair advantage over similar and nearby permanent businesses. So those are the things the commission needs to be considering when you vote on the variance request. In staff's evaluation, uh, due to the proximity of a very, a similar type of a business with Maggie Moose Ice Cream, it's a seasonal business, it's selling luxury, you know, uh, food like this, I guess you would call it, uh, we feel like there is a potential, uh, for a conflict and it could have an adverse impact on this permanent business that is in existence, and for those reasons, we're recommending denial of the variance request. Should the Planning Commission choose to approve the variance request, we do have some conditions of approval that we recommended in your staff report, um, and on condition of approval number three, uh, is referencing that, um, because this has been a snow cone stand on a semi-permanent basis for several years in this location, um, the applicant or the property owner would be required to install one tree in the green space adjacent to where the snow cone stand is, and that's just, uh, to start bringing the property up to code as far as landscape requirements, and, um, we would recommend that whatever tree is planted there be approved by the urban forester, uh, if the, if the commission chooses to approve it and have that condition of approval. Uh, with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Garner. Is the applicant present?
Mr. Chairman, I think we need to put on the record, there's gonna be one recusal on this.
Okay.
Mr. Hoskins is accusing from consideration or voting on this, any discussion or voting on this matter, is that correct, Mr. Commissioner Hoskins?
Yes, sir.
So I'll put that into minutes.
Thanks.
Mr. Commissioner Hoskins, usually that person leaves the room.
That's, it's not, that's not my application or whatever, I'm not related to that patient, I'm just, I am just, uh, uh, in other words, uh, my understanding of the, of the, uh, requirements is that if it's my application or if it's my project or what have you, then I can't speak on it, I can't talk about it, and I have to leave the room. In other words, if, if, uh, something comes through that, that whatever could possibly sway my opinion or whatever, no matter what, then, but it's not my project, I can still be in the room, I just can't speak on it or vote on it. That's my understanding of it.
Mr. Kelly, would you clarify, because that's not how we've done it in the past.
Well, I'm, I'm not familiar with that distinction, but I'll...
Yeah, we have, when the Planning Commissioners recuse, recuse from an item, they, I've al, they always leave the room, in, in my experience, uh, so...
I didn't last time this came through, that's why I was, I was kinda curious about that.
Yeah, that's just the general rules of order, that if you're accusing, the commissioner leaves the room, so there couldn't be any perception of any, uh, you know, not even involved at all in the item, any discussion or body language, things like that.
Well, with that, I'll take my leave then, how about that?
Great time.
Thanks.
Thank you for clarifying that. As the applicant present?
Yes.
Would you tell us about your project?
Okay, my name's Eric Seabert, uh, this is my wife, Katie Seabert, we own Shave the Planet. Um, we are applying for an extension, um, to operate just as we did last year. Um, the one thing, first off, I wanted to mention and, uh, basically prove that shaved ice and ice cream are not related. You can classify them under dessert, but that's as far as it goes. Uh, we've got HMR taxes, um, that prove that, um, just recently, at the end of April, early May, I don't remember the exact date, Andy's Frozen Custard closed their doors, I'm not sure for what reasoning, but we did not see a greater increase in sales than we did last year. We actually saw less of an increase than we did the previous year. Uh, so that just shows that we didn't, you know, they were a pretty big company. When they closed, it didn't, didn't benefit us at all, you know, I, I don't think people are going down the road, should I get shaved ice or ice cream, that's not, that's not what, uh, what this is about, they're very different, uh, in my opinion.
We actually have customers specifically driving from Bentonville, West Fork, Decatur, even Salem Springs and further into Oklahoma, Stillwell, and just to come to Shave the Planet, because it's a treat they can't get anywhere else, you can't go to a brick and mortar store and order shaved ice, um, doesn't exist anywhere in the country to my knowledge, um, I'm sure there's somewhere, but, um, we have, just people come and they come for the experience of, uh, to us, not just any other specific, I mean, 'cause there, there are other shaved ice stands in the area, they come to us specifically for our experience and for our product, and they could get ice cream o- other places, and people might drive specifically to go get ice cream from a certain spot, I know some people who would drive really far just to go to Andy's or Maggie Moose or Shake's, um, so it is, it's a destination, it's not just a place that people can drive by and decide on the fly. So I think that's about it, unless...
Is that, that's...
That's our main point, I guess, is that they're different, we're not competing, is our basic, yeah, our basic thing.
Well, if we have further questions, we'll just call you back.
As far as improving the street, the streetscape, we'd be willing to do that, um, basically you name it, we'll do it.
To a reasonable degree.
But we want Fayetteville to look good too, you know, we're not...
No extinct species of plants that, you know, we have to find from China.
We're not opposed to planting trees or, you know, even if there's anything that we could do to make it a little bit more permanent, or I don't, I don't know exactly...
Or even just better for the streetscape, we're willing to do, we're willing to work with you guys, so, thanks for hearing us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody from the public here to speak to this item? Just come on up and state your name and, uh, and tell us what you have to say.
I brought my kids to drive home the point, um, um, I just wanted to kinda mention two things, when you said, um, that Maggie Moose is luxury, you were, I think, um, on the money with that, because, um, anyone that's been in Maggie Moose is aware that the, the prices are absorbing, and as a mother of three children, going to Maggie Moose compared to going to Shave the Planet is two different experiences. Um, there is no place in town, including Brahms, including Shake's, that I can go and get something for my kids for two dollars, and, and they're happy and they're content and not worry about fat content or, you know, I don't know, fructose corn syrup, I mean, you know, those are just not concerns, it's a, it's a healthy, kind of natural snack that we can have, that they enjoy, um, and it's quick, and you don't have to be there all night to get it. Um, and with Maggie Moose, the only reason I've ever been there was because I got a deal piggy voucher and I was able to get fifty percent off, because otherwise I can't afford it for three kids. So, um, with them being seasonal, with Shave the Planet being seasonal, um, I just kinda feel like it's, I don't feel like, uh, that's really the issue, I feel like Maggie Moose needs to reevaluate their menu and their pricing and look at that and not worry about what Shave the Planet is doing, because even when Shave the Planet's not there, they're not getting that business that Shave the Planet has. So I feel like it's not, they're looking at it like it's a competition and it's not, it's two totally different markets, so, um, I just ask that you all carefully consider this, I feel like Shave the Planet is a, um, homegrown business, I feel like the owners are, um, very, um, serious about, you know, reinvesting in their own business, and, um, I've enjoyed servicing them, I don't have a problem giving my money to them, and I just ask that you all, um, carefully consider that.
Thank you.
Can we get her name for the record, please?
Andrea Lister, sorry, I was asking you all.
Thank you.
Uh, my name is Sarah McNeil, I work at Shave the Planet, um, I think Andrea made several very valid points, it's a totally different product, shaved ice versus a dairy product, there are people that are lactose intolerant, there are people that are watching their weight, and I think that we have a nice alternative to that. Um, I also think it's important to recognize that it's not a transient location, um, it was called that, and I was a little offended by that, uh, since, I've lived in Fayetteville my whole life, since I was seven, eight years old, there has been some sort of shaved ice stand in that specific location, um, ownership has changed, name has changed, and I understand it being viewed transient in that light, but I think that over the past three years, Shave the Planet has made a name for themselves, you have people driving from, as Katie said, we have a woman coming from Centerton three or four times a week just to get this product. Um, I don't think it's transient, and I think that also needs to be addressed, that while there are transient locations that come and go, and I understand how that could affect the city, but I think Shave the Planet is a locally owned establishment, and I think saying no to extending the permit could potentially look like a poor decision for a place to be shutting down a homegrown business, I think that it would be frowned upon, you know, Walmart doesn't shut down anybody else because they're afraid that they might be taking that business away from them, and I think it's important to consider that also. And I need a job, so, that helps too.
Thank you, Ms. McNeil.
Hello, uh, my name is Jacqueline Bunton, um, first of all, I'm just thankful that the city of Fayetteville has given Shave the Planet a permit in the first place, um, I really enjoy their shaved ice. Um, you know, um, I also trust that the city is going to make a fair decision regarding this topic, and so I just wanted to say, first of all, that I've known Katie and Eric for about eight years now, I know that they've worked very hard in growing their business, I think that the success of their business is just definitely testament to the fact that they are hardworking, and that they also are, as they've even said up here, that they are really interested in, um, following guidelines, obeying the city laws, and doing this right, and so, um, I just wanna speak to their character in that, uh, that I really believe that they are not trying to take people's business, they're just trying to do it right by themselves. Um, I wanna point out that Shave the Planet, um, has twenty-five employees total, and about fifteen of them work only at the college location. I think that it is a fair decision to allow Shave the Planet to have the six-month time period rather than the three-month, so that these people could also keep their jobs in a time whenever it is very difficult to find a job, I think that is really great that, um, fifteen jobs are available during the summer months. Um, you know, it's also been said that, um, the debate whether shaved ice and ice cream are the same thing, and whatever anyone's decision on that is, when I decide I want ice cream, I literally have ten different options in Fayetteville, and I wrote them down, so I counted them, and I know that there are exactly ten other options that I can think of in Fayetteville to go get ice cream, including Maggie Moose across the street. So there's plenty of competition in the ice cream world anyway, um, in Fayetteville, and so I just wanted to point that out, that it's not shaved ice that's taking money away from Maggie Moose, I think it's the fact that in the past five years, there's literally been a, a increase in how many shops there are to buy ice cream. Um, not, that's not even including fast food, restaurants, or grocery stores where you can buy it as well. Um, you know, I think that Katie and Eric's business, Shave the Planet, is successful and that they should be rewarded, not punished for that, and, um, I think that they should be approved to keep the permit for six months this year, and I think in the years to come it should also be that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bunton.
My name is Cody Bunton, uh, I'm the husband of Jacqueline, I've been a resident of Fayetteville, um, my entire life, and, uh, I worked in design and marketing for a decade, and, um, I'm a Realtor, worked in commercial real estate, and I'd like to bring up something that I think, um, may have been overlooked in this whole case, uh, there's a saying in commercial real estate, the best place to open a restaurant is between two other restaurants, and that's not because you're taking money out of one business's pocket and moving it next door, the bigger picture in that is that you have now created more reason for me to spend time and money in that part of Fayetteville. Uh, Fiesta Square, which I grew up next to, is not the center of commerce that it used to be, Walmart checked out a long time ago, we've got a bigger, newer, more popular movie theater across town, um, video rentals are becoming a thing of the past, most recently Aldi checked out, uh, so, I guess, that being said, it, it seems a little out of place to, uh, deny extending, you know, this permit to a successful business in that location, and it seems a little out of place that anybody would even oppose it, when they're just bringing more traffic to this part of town.
Thank you, Mr. Bunton.
My name is Ben Israel, uh, fifteen oh one Star Drive, Fayetteville, uh, I own the property that Shave the Planet is located on, and I don't pay any less taxes because they're only there six months. Uh, the taxes are paid on that property, a- and you're calling it brick and mortar, it's not brick and mortar, but the taxes are still paid where they sit there, a lot, they're built. Secondly, they pay sales tax, so I, I guess I'm a little confused about why a brick and mortar building is considered superior to a, another building, uh, that is not brick and mortar. As I said, taxes are the same whether they're there or not, so I would encourage you to, uh, give them the variance to stay another ninety days, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Israel.
Hi, my name's Justin Lefler, and I'm a school teacher at Holt Middle School on Mount Comfort, and I wanted to speak to the dedication of this business to our community, not just, uh, as a group that is out for a profit, but is here to serve something of real value. They helped and donated, um, a tremendous amount of product to our school to encourage students to do well on their, um, academics. They gave students who've showed growth over this school year vouchers for, um, shaved ice, and if these kids go there after this ninety days with their voucher and show up the stand and say, "I worked hard, where's the product that I've been promised?", Maggie Moose isn't going to say, "Here, you earned this." If you guys could help keep this stand open, it'll help keep these kids' faith in the worthwhile efforts that they put in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lefler.
Hi there, my name's Cody Yancy, um, I just wanted to address the, uh, specific dialogue of the unfair advantage and the, uh, detrimental adverse impact, 'cause that's what the voting comes down to. Um, as far as an unfair advantage, um, to tag along to what the property owner said, it might be an unfair advantage that he has to go through all this to be in business, as opposed to Maggie Moose who does not. Um, you know, their business is very simple, once it's established, it gets to run forever, uh, whereas his, he has to apply for a different ordinance or a different variance every year just to stay in operation, um, while he does still pay the same sales tax, has to carry the same insurance on his employees, the same payroll taxes, everything else, so I'm not sure what type of unfair advantage he has. Um, secondly, the detrimental slash adverse impact, like everybody said, you know, snow cones compared to ice cream are two separate things, I don't know anybody that drives down college, gets in between the two locations and says, "Okay, which am I going to have?" They've already made a decision whether they're gonna have a snow cone, but they're gonna have an ice cream treat before they've left the house. If the snow cone stand is not there, they want a snow cone, they're gonna go to a different snow cone stand, they're not necessarily gonna eat ice cream because we removed this snow cone stand, so I don't know if there's any evidence or proof that it's detrimental to their sales, but it seems, you know, based on my opinion, that it would not be. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Yancy.
Hi, um, my name's Samantha Schombach, and I just wanted to kinda speak, um, on behalf of the Shave the Planet employees, um, and drive home, kind of what Sarah was talking about earlier, um, all of us that work at Shave the Planet, we really rely on this job, there's not a lot of places we can go and find summer work, I know, myself being a college student and a lot of the other people that are employed at Shave the Planet, we're full-time students in the fall and spring, and it's really hard for us to find, um, work that we... in the fall and spring and it's really hard for us to find, um, work that we can do just in the summer so that we're able to focus on our academics and we're really able to, um, excel in the classroom and still find a way to financially support ourselves through school and through the summer. And this really is providing a really great opportunity, not only for college students, but for high school students, you know, um, workers that don't have a lot of skill, kind of building their experience and helping them build a work ethic. And it's become a really great community for these young people to grow and to build character. And, um, I think also this stand, especially on college, has really established itself as a great environment for the customers also. It's a really great place for young people in the community that they can get together and they can hang out and it's safe. I don't think we have had, ever had any problems with, um, you know, people causing issues with traffic or, um, getting in tussles or anything. And it's been a really positive place, not only for the employees to grow, but also for our customers to come and really have an experience, an alternative experience. So I hope that you guys consider that when you're determining all this stuff. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schumbo.
Hi, guys. Um, I'm Celestia, I'm with Maggie Moose. Um, I would like to address to everybody, first and foremost, I like Shave Planet. I eat there with my children. Okay. It's, it's a good business. We support them. And I think that that's kind of, I think that the media and the public seems to think that that's the situation. That's not the situation. What I was asking for from the planning commission and city is that they take in consideration of their ordinance. When the, um, original permit was established for ninety days, sixty days, the, the, the original?
Ninety.
Ninety, okay. Um, we have no issue with that. Um, it is a staple that we expect when summer rolls around, okay? And I think that, that all of this has been somewhat twisted. What I am asking is when they ask for that extension, I am asking for an ordinance of some sort to be established so that we're all playing on the same playing field, okay? When I hear of a transient vendor or a mobile vendor, it is that, okay, by definition. And so I think that's great. Whenever they were just talking about supporting the schools, I think everyone knows that we're huge in the schools and softball and parks and all that. I think every business has an obligation to their community, okay, year-round. Um, I, I appreciate the couple like their product. It's not Shave Planet. It is the mobile ordinance. I think that Maude had the same issue not too long ago about this very thing. And so, you know, I just, I would like to establish some game rules here. And, and that's kind of where I was coming from and I think it got blown out of proportion and, and, and everything. And that's, I, I would like to focus back on what we were originally looking at, which is establishing some playing rules so that everybody knows. Um, I did not really know that that was a business model. It's a great business model. I'll be the first to admit. You know, my question is, is then what stops someone like me or other businesses that go, "Hey, wow, they're onto something." Okay? And that's cool. I just, what I'm wanting to do is I'm wanting to approach y'all and say, "This extension is my concern and, and where the playing rules go from here," opposed to a business that's there twelve months out of the year, okay? Um, also, you know, we didn't want to, we didn't want to swamp the city with a bunch of our little customers because I don't think this is about a customer base. I don't think this is this business. I think that this is not about competition. This is about an ordinance. We welcome them. Um, if their business, if their business is as good as it seems to be, you know, then, then they've got space in that, that location of real estate. I mean, I'm all for it. I have competition all around me, okay? I'm just wanting to see some guidelines of where we're going with a mobile or transient vendor. And I'm wanting y'all to take into consideration that if the appeal is there, then, you know, it's going to be to any business that is, is going through low time and high time. You know, maybe that's something that they all should look at. Is that something that y'all really want to set a precedence for? If it is, that's great. But I just, I want to look at the whole picture, not just Shave the Planet. I'm talking about every, everything. Um, that's really all that I wanted to say, but I think y'all already heard my concerns prior to this, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Huskins. Anybody else? I'm going to close the floor to public comment and bring it back to the commission. Commissioners?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Chesser.
Um, first, I'd, I'd like to say that, um, because of something outside of this chamber, I had sort of gotten involved in understanding that there's a lot of discussion about mobile vendors in general. And my understanding is that the city council is taking this issue up. Is that correct? Uh, maybe Andrew could answer that. Do you know?
We have been asked by some city council members to look at changing the ordinance to address different things, including, um, vendors on private property and kind of look at the ordinance again, uh, related to these types of applications and also even to look at, uh, vendors on public property, so.
Okay, so it's under examination?
Right.
I guess I wanted to point out that, um, it's important, I think, for the public to understand that this body does not create ordinance. This body interprets existing ordinance and we only have a limited amount of play in which, uh, that we can interpret. Um, so even, no matter what happens tonight, I think it's important to understand that the, the city council is looking at this and, and might be a better venue, uh, to redress some of the issues that have been brought up tonight. That said, um, I, I feel like there's a very specific part of the ordinance that we are taking under consideration, uh, which is, uh, part B under section three, which says that the outdoor mobile vendors' presence for an extended period of time at one location will not create an unfair advantage over similar and nearby permanent businesses. Um, it's, it's indisputable that there are many nearby permanent businesses and I think it's indisputable that Maggie Moose is one of those. I think the burden on this, um, commission tonight is to determine what, what does similar mean? Kind of a broad definition. And that's why we're a group of people making the decision, not city staff making this decision. Uh, you can blame all of us for whatever we do wrong. Um, so that's what we're going to be discussing. Um, so with that, I have a, a few questions. One is, can the applicant step forward? You'd mentioned some, it's your opinion that the businesses are not similar and it sounds like many of the people supporting you feel the same way. Um, it might even be that the people that operate Maggie Moose feel sort of the same way. You mentioned something about HMR records?
Yes.
Uh, and that you could prove. I'm a little doubtful about the word prove there, but you can show some evidence maybe that the customer base is different somehow and I'd like to hear how you can demonstrate that.
In 2011, we looked at the HMR taxes paid for, um...
And can you define HMR taxes?
The hotel motel restaurant tax. It's a two percent tax on all of the, uh, if they made by hotel motel restaurant.
Okay. And you, you're taxed under that same umbrella?
Yes, we're taxed under that same thing.
Okay.
And, um, we looked at all the, what was made for March, April, May, and June of last year for shakes, Maggie Moose, Andys, and us. And, um, we can, we can see, of course, we don't have May's HMR for the other ice cream shops for this year.
So wait a minute, that's March, April, May, and June. When are you normally in operation?
Well, last year we operated March fifteenth through sixteenth through the end of August. We went about five and a half months. Um, and this year, we wanted to show that, because Andys was the highest grossing of all of those. And they went out of business this year, as you all know. Um, I think they shut their doors late April, early May. I don't remember the exact date. I just remember going to Flying Burrito and they were gone. And, um, we saw last year from March to, sorry, from April to May, we saw a hundred and thirteen percent increase in our sales. Most of that's just due to the weather. April's kind of rainy. Um, and then this year, you would expect since an ice cream shop went out of business that we would see an, an even higher increase. We only saw a one hundred and one percent increase from April to May this year, which is actually less.
So that's twelve percent less than last year?
Than last year. And so it kind of shows that an ice cream shop going out of business, the highest grossing one, didn't help us at all.
Okay, they're, they're further from your location though, right? I mean...
A tenth of a mile.
A tenth of a mile.
They, yeah, you could literally, from Maggie Moose, spit and hit them, yeah.
Okay, so I just wanted to hear, is that all you had to say? Is that what you have to say about the HMR records? Because I wanted to hear what you had to say about that.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what, that's all we had to say about that.
Okay, thank you. So then I have some, uh, other question, I guess a question for staff. Andrew, um, if, if both the ice cream business and the shaved ice business are seasonal, and I'm assuming that the summer season is the season for cold, you know, desserts, that would be the seasonal part of it, I'm a little curious how an extension, well, it seems like the three months of most intense business are already going to be being competed over. If, if that's the, if that's the problem, if the problem is that this business existing as a mobile business has an advantage in, and obviously they pay lower overhead, um, if they are similar, I'm a little curious, it seems like there's a problem with the mobile vending permit or the mobile vendor ordinance in general because if they're seasonal, or they're both seasonal businesses and we allow one to operate during the season when the most money is made, that seems problematic. So that seems like a thing we should take into consideration. I, I don't know. I'm trying to figure out, you know, if we were only to let them operate there in the winter, then I would see how, well, yeah, it's not a, it's not causing a problem for a similar business. This may be a question I should take up with city council and the ordinance, but I'm just a little concerned about how we make a decision on an extension, uh, when the, the bulk of the problem is already occurring, if, if it's a problem. Um, so do you have, I mean, is there anything you can, is that a, is that more of a city council question? Can you answer that at all?
I mean, I think that's probably just, your concerns are more function with the ordinance, it sounds like, you know, than, um, you know, you know, on this, we're really just looking, you're really just looking at the variance findings, which, you know, you know, do you feel like this presence of this vendor for an extended period of time in this location, uh, would create an unfair advantage over similar and nearby permanent businesses?
And so it's staff's opinion that it's similar specifically, I guess, to Maggie Moose or to other businesses nearby? Is that the reason staff recommended denial?
Right.
And can you give me staff's reasons for, I mean, I understand the obvious, that they're both cold dessert items. Is there any other reason that you considered them similar?
You know, um, I, we didn't do a market study. I think, you know, the city attorney's office could also advise you on just what would a reasonable person, you know, think of that. Do you, do you think that snow cones and ice cream are similar? In my mind, just as just an average person, I thought, yes, they're probably similar. Uh, it's a similar, it's a dessert and it's sweet and you eat it mainly during the summer, it's seasonal. Okay, they're similar. Could it have an unfair advantage? You know, I think potentially it could, because I think it would have some of the same types of customers that might go to either one. So that was, you know, in my, trying to do my best job as a, in evaluating these findings, I felt like it, it, just the, the reasonable argument of that finding led me to think that it was, you know, you couldn't make the finding for the variance.
Sure. Okay, I can see that. Mr. Kelly, can you advise us on this? I mean, the word similar to me is very troubling here.
It's up to your judgment.
So, it's not very helpful, but thank you. Um...
I would like to point one other thing out.
Well, hang on one moment. I, I have another question for you first. Um, so you got a ninety-day permit. Last year you had five months, which I'm assuming meant you had an extension of some sort?
We had the conditionally used permit, which is why we got tabled.
Right, which we changed. There were some questions about the way that worked.
We're actually planning, um, recommended approval for it.
No, I understand that. Um, would, um, if you were not in business for more than ninety days, would you have to close up shop?
We'd have some very unhappy customers, so.
Well, but I mean, you're, you're able to make money, you're able to make enough money during those ninety days in, to, to stay there the, the ti, I mean, you would, next, if, if we said no, would you be open?
Would we be open?
Yeah, if we said no to a variance, would you still be open for ninety days?
We would have to find a new place to move and therefore we would lose a lot of our customer base, because, I mean, they know what it is.
They know where the location is. But I mean, would you open in that, for, that location for ninety days?
Next year?
This year. Whenever, the, the variance is for this year, right?
Yes.
For an additional ninety days?
I'm sorry, so you would have already been there for ninety days? Yeah, okay, next year. Let's say next year. You're right. Let's say next year. Next year, would you open for ninety days at the height of the summer there? Sorry, bad question.
We would really like to work with the city on what is the perfect amount. That way it doesn't get blown up, of course.
I, I understand that. I'm just asking, my guess is yes, right?
Here's the issue. You're not, you're not saying that nobody else can set up a snow cone stand on that property.
I understand that. I understand that.
We can leave and the, the next...
Someone else can do that. I understand that.
There's going to be a shaved ice vendor there regardless whether it's us or somebody else.
So it's, it's worth to be, it's worth it to be there for ninety days?
Yes.
It is. You just have to have twice as many locations.
I understand, because you have to move a half a mile away. And
At the last minute.
Here's the thing, again, we can't, I can't make, I'm not sure why the, the number is ninety days. That's a question for city council and I can't address that. That's not, that's not in any of our power to address. Um, I'm finding, I'm trying to find out, you know, it sounds like you would be there either way, right? If it's for ninety days or a hundred and twenty days, you want to be there during that time, because it's a good location.
Yeah, year after year.
Right. Year after year, you'd want to be.
We'd like to be there as many years as possible, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Um, so then one last question for, I guess this would be staff. Um, property taxes were brought up and this is something, there are a number of, there are a number of things a brick and mortar store would have to pay in terms of overhead that a mobile vendor might not. Would property taxes be different in this location if there were a, a brick and mortar store there? My assumption is yes, because an assessment would be higher, because the valuation of the property would be higher. Am I incorrect in that?
I'm not. Is anybody, I'm not for sure. I can have my...
I mean, improved property is worth more than unimproved property generally.
Okay, so the...
But there may be improvements on other parts of this lot. This is a front section toward the street, so, and I don't know if there could be another brick and mortar building put in this.
It may not be legal. Okay. But it'd be probably safe to assume that more improvements on a property would raise the property taxes.
Property taxes are based on value.
Okay.
I'm just not sure that's a criteria for evaluation of this item, is it? I mean...
Uh, it may not be. I was just trying to respond to something one of the public had said about, you know, that the property taxes were the same. And I'm not really sure that it's fair to say that. I, I get, I think actually it is reasonable because we're talking about an advantage here. It says, would it, number three, part B says that the outdoor mobile vendors' presence for an extended period of time at one location will not create an unfair advantage. So we're also determining what an advantage is, right? And I would assume that higher overhead or lower overhead is an unfair advantage potentially.
It would also depend on whether the occupants of the brick and mortar building were tenants or landlords or whether they were paying the property tax. That could all...
Well, I mean, you're robbing Peter to pay Paul there, right? Ultimately, the renter is probably going to be paying the property tax in some way. I'm going to assume. Okay. I'm going to yield the floor because I feel like I've held it up long enough. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I may have further questions later.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Cook?
Sir, thank you. Um, I agree with Mr. Chesser's comments. Um, one of your comments, one of the first ones you made was, "It's not our responsibility to legislate. City council legislates and we just follow." And in this case, the city council has established our determining factors in this and they're quite succinct. And I agree with Mr. Kelly. It is up to our best judgment to value those as we feel. Um, and I feel that this is compatible with the nearby businesses. It's not detrimental or creates, it does not create an unfair advantage and I don't think it works as a dangerous traffic situation. So with that, I'm going to make a motion to approve ADM twelve dash four one four four with agreement of all three conditions set out by the staff.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Cook, a second from Commissioner Cave. Is there further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Garner.
Can I clarify on condition number three? Um, would you be amenable to changing that to make sure the urban forester approves the tree that they planted? Would you be amenable to changing that to make sure the urban forester approves the tree that they plant?
Yes.
The species of the tree?
I agree with that.
Okay.
As do I. I have some, I have questions. Uh, yeah. Andrew, would you remind me when these folks came in with the original conditional use permit request that we tabled and then kinda went away?
I think it was late April?
Late March.
Late March.
Like twenty-sixth or twenty-fourth, whenever that one was.
And, and I, I think it's reasonable to note that, that, that also the, the, the mobile vendor ordinance was revised, was rewritten by city council, and that new ordinance came into effect May one of this year. So that's probably why last year you got support, and this year you didn't. Just laying that out there. And, um, I, I also had a question, and I guess since I seconded the motion, I pretty much answered them in my mind, but, um, in that, in, in the attorney's memo with the additional language on the ordinance, it's full of terms like, um, similar, compatible, not detrimental, not adversely affect, unfair advantage, similar nearby permanent business. All those are up for individual interpretation, right? There's, there's nowhere to look for guidance on those.
It is, it is based on your judgment as a planning commissioner, based on the facts that you've been presented, and the application that's been made to you. I mean.
That's just cagey.
The best thing I can, can, can equate it to is if you're on a jury, you get read a jury instruction, and you hear all this testimony, and you gotta decide. And, and a lot of juries would love someone to say, well, but how do I do that? Well, that's the job, so you've got to, that's, that's basically the equivalent of what you're called upon to do.
Understood, and that's, that's, we signed up for all that. I, um, I just wanted noted that, that the ordinance did change, and it's full of language that requires judgment. Um, and I think that all of us are gonna read those terms very differently. I also, um, I, I feel like that ordinance, I, I feel like, I don't wanna spend too much talking about the ordinance itself, but I feel like the ordinance, um, was first written and first became an opportunity for, um, small businesses, for businesses that couldn't commit to brick and mortar in a parking lot and all of that, to get their legs under them and do something, um, atypical, maybe. And I, I fully feel like a seasonal business is exactly that sort of opportunity. Like the applicant said, there's, there are very few, um, brick and mortar versions of this around the country. It's a seasonal business model, kind of like, uh, pool cleaning or window washing, but there are plenty of people who do those, those kinds of businesses. And with all that, I'll be able to support this without, uh, too many problems. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cave, I wanted to say also that, uh, I've been convinced that there's a substantial enough difference between shaved ice and ice cream to support this. We have a motion and a second, is there further discussion? Mr. Garner, which color roll?
Cave?
Yes.
Chester?
Yes.
Pontle?
Well, I'm torn. No.
Cook?
Yes.
Winston?
Yes.
Bunch?
Yes.
Noble?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you for all of your time coming in tonight.
Thank you.
Next item is administrative item one two four one two nine for Lindsay. Uh, who has the staff report on this?
Sarah Reed.
I'm gonna give the staff report.
Ms. Reed?
Okay, this is a variance request from the streamside ordinance. I'm sorry. So the request is to reduce the streamside zone by seventeen hundred square feet in order to allow construction of an in-ground pool. An in-ground pool is not allowed within the streamside zones. In addition to the in-ground pool, it would, um, also include a deck, a retaining wall, tree removal in, you know, construction of the pool. You can see the lot, it, it's, um, it's a good-sized residential lot, it's point six-five acres, but the, um, north half of it, um, is, is, uh, Mud Creek, and there's a FEMA floodway with that. So what I'm trying to point out is a pretty large portion of this lot falls into the streamside protection zones. So, the planning commission can grant a variance of the streamside ordinance if the, um, if the applicant shows undue hardship is caused, um, you know, by not allowing the variance. Uh, and they're proposing that it is an undue hardship based on the site constraints of the, the creek, the existing house. To the south, there are utility easements and a swell that goes, that carries water from off-site through this backyard. They're proposing to mitigate the impact of the encroachments into the streamside zones with the bioretention basin, and they've sized that using the low-impact development chapter, um, from our draft drainage criteria manual as their guide, um, to, to size that, and they are showing it to provide about twice the water quality treatment benefit of the existing land use in this area, which is turf grass and some small trees. The, what I handed out to you before the meeting started is an updated site plan. It, the changes in that plan are that the east side of the retaining wall, um, show it curving back up towards the house instead of to the east, um, that was changed, because the retaining wall needs to tie back into grade, so the first site plan was, was an error in, in that way. And it also shows the removal of an eighteen-inch caliper oak tree that was not in the original site plan. And then the other handouts I gave you just showed the, uh, a basic detail of a bioretention basin and an overview of the calculations used to size the, the bioretention. Uh, the other mitigation proposed is that the applicant would plant seven, um, additional, or would, would, after the project, plant seven three-inch caliper trees, uh, that they would do the construction access through the golf course so that the yard, which is in the streamside, would not be driven through. During the agenda session, uh, the possibility of a conservation easement on the north side of the property was brought up. I asked the applicant, and they said that they were, um, I guess I would just say they, they sounded amenable to the idea. And I would add that in the staff recommended conditions of approval, that that's, that's not written in there. And the other conditions of approval are mainly, um, mainly have to do with the way that city staff would, would permit this, other permitting requirements if you choose to approve it. So staff feels that it is difficult to determine, you know, whether a hardship exists for whether or not you can build a pool, but based on the site constraints, relatively small backyard, um, we're recommending approval and feel that the mitigation as proposed, um, meets the objectives of the streamside ordinance.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Is the applicant present? If you'd come up and state your name for the record and, uh, tell us about your project.
I'm Jeff Bates, I'm one of the engineers on the project, um, Sarah did a good job explaining it. Just, I'd like to elaborate just a little bit more on the site constraints. Almost the entire lot, like she says, is in the streamside pres- to that, streamside protection zone, say that fast five times. And we didn't really pick a location for the pool, it has to be there, because there's no other place for it to go. It's jammed in there by the house, the utility easement, this creek, and this, uh, big drainage swell on the south side. The developer, the property owner also is willing to mitigate, and, uh, we have another engineer here, Travis Scott from FDN, he's our expert on low-impact development, and, uh, uh, I'd like to ask him to come up and explain that a little bit, if that's okay, before we get going. I also have Kim Fugit here, he's the architect, and, uh, you Jared, if you all have any other questions.
My name's Travis Scott, I'm with the FDN Associates, we're a water resources firm here in Fayetteville. And, uh, Sarah went through the memo pretty thoroughly, I think, so I don't have much to add. I did provide a summary of the water quality treatment, uh, um, details as far as computations for the bioretention. But before I talked about that, I did want to mention, um, number one, Sarah spoke of a retaining wall, that is something that is permitted by the ordinance, uh, regardless of whether there's a variance allowed for a pool. So, there are some, there's some tree removal for the retaining wall, that would be independent in a sense of the pool. The other item to mention is that the drainage swell that comes through the area that is not within the streamside protection zones, uh, pretty much bisects the available area remaining. And in the memo, Sarah references that there is approximately point six-five acre for the lot area, and then further down, twenty-seven thousand square feet of the property is located within the streamside protection zone. That works out to approximately ninety percent of the lot area, so there's roughly three thousand feet remaining to work in. Again, as Jeff said, a portion of that is bisected by the drainage swale, and also there's another portion of that that comprises the southern, uh, part of the footprint of the house on the lot, and then there's the driveway in the front yard. So, the drainage swale, um, the question could be asked as to whether it would be possible to redirect the drainage that would require access on two other sites, uh, two other lots that are adjacent to the homeowner's lot, and, uh, permissions to redirect drainage, as well as a significant amount of earthwork. Therefore, I don't believe that's feasible compared to the possibility of requesting a variance. The other item to mention, as far as the variance itself, is, uh, mitigation, Sarah has put together eleven individual items that are conditions of approval for mitigation. Included in those is construction of the bioretention basin in accordance with the requirements. The summary information that you see on the calculation summary sheet basically reflects a design of bioretention that addresses the runoff of the first inch of rainfall for the area, the disturbed area that would be, um, that would include the pool and the surround, as well as some additional landscape within that variance area. So it's basically a swap there, seventeen hundred square foot of variance area, all that to be, um, disturbed by a construction of pool or, uh, landscaped, as well as treating runoff from a portion of the rooftop of the house, that is eight hundred fifty square feet approximately. So the total treated area is, uh, about twenty-five hundred fifty square foot, treating the first inch of rainfall, and the construction of the bioretention basin would be consistent with the low-impact development chapter design that allows for a level-one bioretention feature, uh, for approximately sixty percent pollutant removal, which is fairly consistent with the pollutant removal that is provided in the FAQs that speak about the streamside ordinance and the fact that the riparian buffer allows for a reduction or an improvement of water quality by reducing pollutants on the order of fifty to sixty-two percent. So, the level of water quality treatment is approximately the same. We have sixty percent for the design LID feature, uh, and a range between fifty and sixty-two percent reported by the national BMP database, and as, uh, listed in the FAQs regarding the streamside ordinance published by the city of Fayetteville. I think that's all that I have right now, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Mr. Bates, is your presentation concluded?
Yeah, yes, thank you.
Thank you. Wanna open it up to public comment, is there anybody here from the public that'd like to speak to this issue?
Thank you, my name is Robert Briggs, I live at thirty-five zero seven Parport, and my house is two houses to the south. Those are the, all three white cars. We got discount. I come to you not only as a neighbor in support of, of the, of the variance, but also having spent nearly, uh, ten years working on a project trying to protect the watershed, and this was the Lake Fort Smith project. And, as was pointed out pungently here moments ago, it is sometimes difficult to understand what, in this instance, the city of Fayetteville, through their lawyers, was meant in defining to, certain terms. But the purpose of the streamside ordinance was the same purpose Fort Smith had in protecting its watershed. And what it did in that case was it limited the amount of construction, uh, livestock raising, and the different types of pollution that were permitted, um, in the context of an easement, but not a zoning ordinance, which you have here. So what the city is trying to do here in protecting the creek is not protecting Mud Creek itself, but trying to protect the water downstream from Mud Creek. So if you can see the context of trying to protect something further downstream, I think that's gonna help you in formulating the basis of your decision. In addition, what they did in Fort Smith, Lake Fort Smith, is they put in exceptions for the landowners. There's a balance between trying to protect the watershed and a balance between property right ownership. And that balance that Fort Smith adopted was to allow residents to remove trees to preserve their views. And the city would be asked, we want to remove these trees so we can preserve our view in that instance of the, of the waterway in the mountains. And here, you can't tell this, but this is facing to the west, and there's a sun will set every night over that view. So again, Fort Smith recognized that property ownership has value and tried to balance those things, and I would ask you to do the same here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Briggs.
Albert Shepherd, I'm glad I, uh, didn't look at your agenda as I often do, and sometimes put it on the internet, on my own sites. Before I came, I just came wandering in here, here's an exception to the, uh, streamside protection ordinance, which was gutted through two years of meetings. It was reduced from a reasonable hundred feet or something to what we got. It's very weak, very, very weak. That there be any exceptions to it should be more than somebody wants to pull. Do you remember being in one of the meetings when the county, uh, agent, uh, who works on water quality the most, pointed out, he brought in pictures of a, of underground, or in-ground swimming pool that was built in the riparian zone or in the flood plain, and described how, well, showed how it looked when it was swollen, the stream water, which was muddy at the time. Usually when there's a big flash flood, it brings mud from some construction site, or some roadside, or some park. Most of them are construction sites where it comes from. So that silt not only was going downstream, it filled up the pool, which just made it laughable that anybody would want to put a pool in that area. Maybe a little plastic one, the kids could play in when the storm was, they knew a flash flood was possible to, drag it up to the house or something. to drag it up to the house or something. But this ordinance was weakened by many meetings in which various people, many of them just fantasizing that it would affect their property, but deciding it was property rights. Well, it's property rights downstream. If flooding upstream is increased by minimizing the width of the stream with a wall, or by putting buildings into that streamside protection area, and particularly if it's clearly in the floodplain. Certainly, it can be true that somebody's land is 20 feet above the stream bed, and the stream has never historically gotten up there and probably never can. But mostly when these things, if it says be a floodplain, that's, that means it's really in the overflow area of the stream. So, I don't know, has there, Mr. Chairman, been a, or somebody else answered this, Mr. Chairman, has there been such a variance to the streamside ordinance up to this point?
I think this is the first test.
There has been. Yeah.
There has been one?
Montessori school. I mean, it wasn't a pool, but it was hard surface.
Oh, yeah, over a, a second.
So this is the second?
The first pool.
Okay, well, I'm very sympathetic. People like to have a swimming pool, I'd love to have one. But if I live there, and the stream's pretty clean, even though they call it Mud Creek, I might take the kids down there to play in the stream, learn about nature, look at the turtles and the minnows, and the frogs and the fish, and the wildflowers that grow down there. And I certainly wouldn't remove any trees there, alter the vegetation, and I'd be making it, I would be getting it certified, my whole property, as, by the National Wildlife Federation, as wildlife habitat. It fell, what was it, two weeks ago? On the first of June, less than two weeks, was honored by the National Wildlife Federation as the first city in Arkansas that has been registered or certified as a habitat community. And the streamside ordinance is something that works toward that goal. I know that the, I spoke against that at the time, that it should not be geared only to reserving or improving water quality to avoid paying extra to cleanse our water, but it also should take into account the wildlife values, the aesthetic values, and all the things that go into streamside protection or riparian zone protection. So I hope you will look closely at this, and I hope you will not approve it. May I ask another question, Mr. Chairman? If this is approved at this body, will it have to go to the council to be made final? Or do you guys have the final say in it?
I believe we have the final say.
Okay. Well, I'm disappointed the staff even recommended it. But you, you know, this wasn't in the newspaper, and I know it's the TV station left to talk, interview the people about the previous item, which is important also. But this is something I waited for decades to see, a streamside protection ordinance that really would work. And this one can work pretty well, even though it's weakened. If you guys stick to the letter of the law, and please, please do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shepherd.
My name is Lindy Lindsey, and I live at the residence. The elevation of the pool will be at the elevation of the house. You know, there's solid rock about, we think about eight to 10 foot deep, so that could affect, you know, the deep end of the pool and everything, so the elevation of the pool will be at the house. In 16 years of living there, we've seen several floods. I've never seen the flood get to the 100-year floodplain line, but, you know, we've had Paradise Valley Golf Course since the early 80s, and we've had some major floods out there. And last April, that flood that we received went five feet over that green down there, 17 Green by Old Missouri Road, which is the highest it's ever been. So, we've seen some serious floods. They've never gotten close to the house. That last one was probably five feet in elevation, had to come up more to get to the house. So, if the pool is set at the elevation of the house, there won't be any issues with it getting full of mud.
Sir, do you know the elevation of your house right offhand? Do you know what that is?
Ah, it looks like it's 1240 something.
I don't know the elevation of the house proper, but there's data points within the cul-de-sac, which is slightly below the finished grade of the house. The elevation in the cul-de-sac is 1239.4, according to the City of Fayetteville topographic data. And the flood elevation, there's a lettered cross-section that represents locations of sections within the 100-year floodplain for Mud Creek, immediately downstream of the location of the house. That elevation is 1237.5. So the house elevation is approximately two feet plus a little above the elevation of the 100-year floodplain at that location. Now, if you look at the delineation of the 100-year floodplain, it does extend over onto a portion of the house. That reflects inaccuracy just based on the level of contour data that was used in preparation of the floodplain boundaries at that time. There were four-foot contours that were used for delineation of the floodplain for Washington County. That was based on 2004 data. I believe the city's topographic data that's published on the website now is more recent than that. Is that correct? Does it point elevations?
I don't know, do you know what the, it may still be 2004, I'm not sure.
Well, that's the best I can give you, but it is higher than the elevation in the cul-de-sac. Thank you.
Fair enough, thank you very much.
Want to close a public comment and bring it back to the commission?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Cabe.
I, let me start by, first off, I have the utmost confidence in our city engineers, and if they will point to a plan and say that it is acceptable and is a, and it contains a reasonable repair to the site and to the stream based on our low-impact development and our streamside protection ordinance, I see no reason to not have full faith in that determination. So on that point, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve administrative item What do I determine a variance on number one, or do I agree with staff on number one?
You're moving to approve the variance subject to the conditions stated in the staff report?
And I would like the record to be exactly the way he said it. That was way better than what I would come up with.
Second. I have a motion from Commissioner Cabe, and a second from Commissioner Cook. Is there further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chesser.
I did have a question, just quickly. If I recall correctly, in the Stream, in the Streamside Act, isn't paving allowed, a certain amount of paving allowed within the streamside protection area?
12 feet.
12 feet.
12 feet wide.
12 feet wide by what length?
Linear.
By no length, by the entire length of the yard. So, I mean, that's probably fairly similar to what we're talking about here anyway, in terms of area, 12 by 100.
The pool is proposed to be, I believe, 16 by 32.
There's some paving too, right? It looks like.
With a six-foot paved deck, concrete deck area around the perimeter of the pool.
Right, but it's, the variance is for 1,200 square feet or something. Am I not correct about that? 1,700 square feet. Is that correct?
Yes, 1,700 square feet.
Okay. I don't find that to be that different than the amount of paving area that would be in a driveway, and it sounds like they're mitigating far better than a driveway would be mitigated for, so I see no issue with this. I'm assuming that construction will require silt fencing. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, it'll have a grading permit.
I think this is, I think this is the appropriate place for a reasonable variance. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Chesser. I have one question for the applicant, as far as, Mr. Bates, probably you could answer this one. When the pool is drained for maintenance, where does it drain to?
That's what we're talking about, maybe some in the bio swell, or hopefully they aren't going to have to drain the entire thing, but it'll have to be probably pumped out somewhere.
Pumped out into?
But I would assume not in the creek.
Well, if it goes to the storm sewer, the storm sewer just goes to the creek.
Correct.
Right, so, it could be, I think it should go to the sanitary sewer. I believe that's.
Our water and sewer department has a document with guidelines of how pool water should be discharged, and I believe this is a saltwater pool, and I don't recall this time what the guidance was for saltwater pools.
We might need to clarify that.
But in general, we wouldn't, we wouldn't approve of a direct discharge to the creek or directly to the storm sewer, possibly to the sanitary, or possibly to open grass would be, I think the two methods that would be acceptable.
What, I guess the quickest and easiest way to say this is whatever the regulations are regarding how that pool is supposed to be drained, apply. That is whether, I mean, so whatever the rules are, they have to apply with them. That is separate apart from the consideration here regarding the variance regarding the construction of the pool. So, as long as they know they've got to comply by the letter of the law in that process, then I guess that covers that part, that would be my suggestion. Hopefully, there's laws about that.
There are, yes.
Mr. Chesser.
I just, this is pertaining to, but this is just kind of a question from my own personal satisfaction. This is to the city attorney. A property like this, if 90 percent of that suddenly falls within this streamside ordinance that was passed just out of nowhere to somebody who just done luck, and I don't want to get a raging debate going, but how is that not a taking? I mean, when it, when it comes to that, and I, just a brief explanation.
Because the existing uses are still permitted. It wasn't that, anything that was going on there is still perfectly allowed. It's the new things which have been put some regulation on. So, nothing's been taken as far as that's concerned. That's the shortest answer I can give you.
Okay, well, I mean, we haven't voted yet, so I, that's, I was just curious.
In fact, there's a much more well-reasoned and legal opinion on city, on our access Fayetteville website that regards streamside protection as a link right to it, and it could do a much better job than I can do here in three minutes. Explain it, it's pretty attractive.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Hoskins.
I was going to remain silent, but I can't help myself. We all knew when this ordinance passed that we were going to have lots of folks coming in, that, hey, I could use my property for this before, but I can't now, and therefore we put in the variance process, you know, for this particular purpose, so that people could continue to use their property. And agenda, I asked staff point blank, has the applicant fulfilled all the responsibilities to mitigate anything that they're doing in that area? And the staff, everybody said thumbs up. So, the variance is in place, I would think, to help us prevent the taking, okay? The variance process or whatever, and.
Taking by denying the use.
That's, yeah, exactly. I think it would come closer to, even though I don't think it's really our, maybe it is our charge, maybe it's not, and I'm sure he'll correct me if I'm wrong, but by denying a variance where the staff has said, yeah, they've done everything they need to do to mitigate, then you could be potentially borderline.
That's what I was saying.
By denying.
Correct. That's what I was saying.
With that, I'm done.
Thank you, sir. Sir, further discussion? Mr. Garner, would you come along?
Cabe?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Chesser?
Yes.
Pontchel?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Winston?
Yes.
Bunch?
Yes.
Noble?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you for coming in. Next item of businesses, preliminary plat 12-4126 for Cobblestone, Phase 3. Mr. Garner, can you give us the staff report?
Yes, sir. The overall Cobblestone subdivision contains approximately 60 acres. It's located just east of Salem Road, and Rockhaven subdivision is located immediately to the west. The property is owned RSF 4 and RSF 8. It's bisected by two collector streets on our master street plan. The original preliminary plat for Cobblestone was approved back in 2007, and they have final platted Phases 1 and 2, and they're before the commission asking for a final plat for Phase 3, which is 59 residential lots. In April of this year, the planning commission approved variances for this subdivision to allow block length that was shorter than allowed under the ordinance, and also to have a variance of the street cross-section. And the applicant is now before the commission asking for the development approval of that subdivision. They've also submitted another variance request for the commission to consider tonight, to allow for lots along Raven Lane, which is a collector street, to all have individual curb cuts. Our access management ordinance requires like a new residential subdivisions like this for access to be shared between lots on a collector street. One other item I wanted to point out was that one of the standard requirements in residential subdivisions is for street trees to be planted, one tree per lot, and those are typically planted in between, you know, the curb and the sidewalk. And in this particular subdivision, because of the, one of the variance requests allowed for some narrower streets, in addition to the location of some storm drainage, there's not enough room to plant the trees in the cross-section. So they're proposing to have the sidewalks be located outside of the right-of-way and pedestrian access easement to get them more room to plant the street trees, and staff's recommending a favor of that. So, condition of approval number one is determination of a variance to allow for the lots on Raven Lane to all have individual curb cuts. As you'll see in the staff report, we're recommending denial of the variance, and we have the ordinance listed in your packet discussing what needs to be considered for this type of a variance, also discussing that needs to be some sort of a hardship. In our opinion, there's not a hardship. This is the time to plat, shared access in the design of the subdivision in this early stage, and we feel like their proposal to access each lot and a brand-new subdivision on a collector would be in, would conflict with the intent of the access management ordinance in residential subdivisions, which is to limit the access onto collector streets. Condition of approval number two is planning commission recommendation of street improvements, and these are pretty straightforward, so I won't read through those. I did want to call your attention to condition of approval number three. If the commission approves the variance for the, to access the collector lots, you can strike condition of approval number three. And I did want to point out mainly to the applicant, but also to the commission, condition of approval number eight, it's under our parking code, Chapter 172. Basically, it doesn't allow for cars to park on the public sidewalk, and so with the street cross-section, it would narrow the, the setback would be the same, the setback, the building setback would still be measured from the right-of-way line, but this ordinance would require for the garages to be set back at least 18 feet from the sidewalk to allow for a car to park in between. Everything else on here, I think, is pretty straightforward, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Garner. Is the applicant present? Can you state your name for the record and tell us about your project?
Will do. Blake Jorgensen with Jorgensen Associates. Appreciate y'all's time tonight. Be pretty short. We've gone over a few of these items before. The newest item that we really need to speak on is the request for variance for the shared access drive, and if Glenn, you could pull up Google Earth, I think we'd get a pretty clear picture. If you could zoom out a bit more, right there, that's fine, you'll notice that all the houses along ICA, they have, they don't have shared access drives, and other ones along Raven, even to the south.
drives, and other ones along Raven, even to the south, and the Crystal Springs have shared access drives. So essentially, they just want to match the current street cross-section right here. You're talking about five new homes having a shared access drive while, uh, roughly a hundred, a hundred houses along from here down to the south would not have that. So they just want to be consistent with the existing homes that are already built. Even since, uh, Google Earth's latest image, if you went out there, there's more homes built than, uh, the current image, and so that's why we're requesting the variance. If there's any other questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Jorgensen. Is there anybody here from the public to speak to this issue?
No.
Seeing none, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the commission. Mr. Chair. Commissioner Hoskins?
I would like for the commission to discuss the variance and vote on it separately from the overall issue, because that way we're not, I mean, maybe it's a good idea, maybe it's not, you tell me what you think. Because the, uh, because you don't want to, seems like you don't want to vote for or against the entire project based on that.
Sure. Well, let's see what kind of discussion there is regarding the, the variance.
Just wanted to play the seat, you know?
Sure. Yeah.
Great.
Thanks.
Discussion or motions?
Well, my motion depends entirely on whether or not we're going to do the variance separately or not. Mr. Chair, uh, I, I tend to agree with staff on the, uh, the determination of the variance, uh, but, but support the, the rest of the item. So you guys can take that and use it to figure out how you're going to go.
Your, your, uh, voting, you would, you'd be voting to deny the variance, is that correct?
I am, I support staff's position.
Yes.
With regards to the variance.
Thank you.
It depends on if it's a separate item as to whether or not to vote.
Was that, I was discussing with Commissioner Hoskins, was that a motion?
It was not.
Okay. All right, then. He's seen. Just keep discussion. Mr. Chair. Commissioner Chesser.
Um, I think Mr. Hoskins, uh, Commissioner Hoskins makes an excellent point. As city attorney, is it, is your opinion that we can vote on that separately? And if so, how do we do it?
You can, yes, if, if you can go ahead and...
We just move to consider?
Move to grant that variance, uh, subject to file, to full approval of preliminary plat.
What about denial? What if I want to deny it?
Well, you can move to deny it, and then an affirmative vote would be that it would not pass. It gets complicated, so it can be done that way.
So I would, if I were to move to deny it and get a second, we would discuss that?
Someone could move to adopt the preliminary plat without that condition of approval. If that were to fail, then there could be a motion with that condition granting the variance, which would...
Sounds like we're taking them up together, though. It doesn't sound like you can separate the two.
If you want to vote separately and you have a motion that you would like, I'll, you can vote separately.
Well, it's complicated enough that Hoskins brought it up, I'm going to let him decide. You, you can do it if you want to, Tracy, I'll support you.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Hoskins?
Okay. Let me start the debate for a second. Um, again, I'm not one of those people that you excuse bad behavior by pointing to previous bad behavior as far as the, the curb cuts on the collector street. However, the applicant does make a good point. If you look across the collector street as it is now, there's driveway curb cuts all over the place. Now, if this was a longer street or higher density development, you know, I, I believe I would go along with that, but again, as the applicant stated, there's five houses along that entire stretch. Um, so what's, what's the, the net number difference of curb cuts? One, two?
Two.
Two.
Something like that.
Okay, uh, and now it's no longer in the same design flavor as the rest of the project. So what's that? I think I'll make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve the variance, uh, from, uh, oh goodness, help me, there's Andrew here. Approve the variance, which number is that?
He's not going to...
To approve condition of approval number one, to approve the variance.
Approve the variance under condition number one of the proposal.
You done?
I think I am, I'm not sure.
I'll second if you're finished.
Is this simply about the variance?
Yes.
Yes, and now a discussion about the variance would be appropriate at this point in the vote, just on that particular issue.
Okay, let's discuss the variance. If there is discussion, is there further discussion on the variance?
Mr. Chair.
And a, and a second? Commissioner Chesser?
Um, this, uh, I feel like we, I feel bad for this property, actually, because I feel like we keep going back and forth, because some things got approved early on, and then there was a time lag and things in the city changed.
That's true.
I, I gotta say, I'm torn on this one, because my inclination would be to agree with staff that the time, the time to arrange for shared access is during preliminary plat stages when there's nothing there yet. Uh, it seems obvious. Uh, here's a question. Andrew, did, did this change from when the applicant first brought the project through, or should they have known this from the beginning?
When it was originally approved in two thousand and seven, the original preliminary plat for the whole Cobblestone, this was not a part of. The ordinance was adopted after that.
Okay. So, when they started out, they would have expected to have individual curb cuts for each property, correct? But things have changed in the meantime. Um, you know, we could blame the applicant, but the, we could also blame the economy, um, for slowing things down. Um, huh, I was ready to, to deny it, but given Mr. Hoskins, or Commissioner Hoskins' point that it's only a net difference of two curb cut differences and that it was approved originally, I guess I'm leaning towards support now. Thank you.
Further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Cabe?
In response to Commissioner Chesser, I just think as, as this road can, gets extended and continues to get built out, that every developer who comes in is going to point to, like Commissioner Hoskins said, the bad decisions made previously, and it will continue to perpetuate itself, and, uh, that, that staff has stated, uh, a pretty good reason, uh, not to grant that variance, and, um, just because it's only a couple of curb cuts, uh, it's, it's good after bad. My, my, my position on it, the way I look at it, as opposed to just a few more curb cuts, what's the difference?
Thank you. Commissioner Cabe? Commissioner Hoskins?
I would agree with Commissioner Cabe's comments, other than we are within the middle of a neighborhood, and this, this part of this, this area, this section...
Let's make it right from here on.
This, well, not yet, we'll make it right later. The, this section is within this neighborhood. Once we go beyond the neighborhood, the commission may have a, a totally different look at this in, the entire deal, but we are right in this, a small area and finalizing this neighborhood. Um, also, I have, I have a question. Uh, uneven engineering.
Yes, sir.
You said there was five lots, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Uh, one, yeah.
Okay. You have five lots, which means you'd have three shared driveways. That means one of those shared driveways goes to nowhere, is that right?
No, it, they're wanting the shared driveway for lot five to be for the future lot that's quite a bit larger to the north, um, right there.
If it ever becomes a future lot.
That's correct. And, and as far as, you know, where does that domino stop falling? Uh, topographical, as you go north, it's a lot, quite a bit steeper, so I would assume that whoever does do phases beyond this development would have a different, um, concept in mind, and so, you know, if, if you're looking down that pipeline of Raven all the way to Crystal Springs, it's, it's, I'm, I would think that's going to be a different product in the future. So it's, I'm not saying that this is going to be curb cuts forever going north, so I just speaking on behalf of the property to the north, so...
Well, how do you know that that curb cut between the lot you're plating and the future lot above, how do you know that it'll be located in a place that'll work for that lot?
That's one reason we're asking the variance, I suppose.
Okay. Well, that makes sense. I stand by my motion.
Further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Chesser?
I'd love to respond to Commissioner Cabe. Uh, to say first, in a, I believe in a, in a variance, it doesn't set precedent, correct?
That's right.
Okay. And then, uh, secondly, I think this, I do think this is an unusual situation in that they're straddling, so I'm going to stick with my guns. Thank you.
Mr. Gardner, would you call the roll?
Wait a minute, so we're voting to approve, correct?
The variance.
The variance.
Cabe?
No.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Chesser?
Yes.
Honchul?
Yes.
Cook?
No.
Winston?
Yes.
Bunch?
Yes.
Noble?
Yes.
Motion carries.
So regarding the, the preliminary plat?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Chesser?
Uh, just question for staff. Andrew, I believe, so, were we to allow the variance which we just voted on, which we allowed, then, then, uh, a condition approval number three needs to remain? Have I got that correct? Needs to be stricken.
Yeah.
So were I to vote to approve now, I would want to strike condition approval number three?
Correct.
Given what had just happened. Mr. Chair, uh, I move that we approve, see, approval, right, not forward? Approve, uh, PPL twelve-dash-four-one-two-six with staff recommendations of approval, except striking condition approval number three.
We have a motion from Commissioner Chesser, and a second from Commissioner Honchul. Further discussion? Mr. Gardner, would you call the roll?
Cabe?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Chesser?
Yes.
Honchul?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Winston?
Yes.
Bunch?
Yes.
Noble?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Are we done with this development? I hope.
We're going to see you people back here, aren't we?
Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, next item is, uh, large-scale development twelve-dash-four-one-one-seven for Arvest Bank. Mr. Fulcher, can you give the staff report?
Certainly. This is property located at the southwest corner of College Avenue Township Street. Property is owned C two thoroughfare commercial. Uh, properties, the north part of the property was previously a car lot, which is now vacant. The south part of the property will remain in the Sessa Burger King property, but, uh, there will be some reconstruction of their entrance and of their parking lot area as part of this Arvest redevelopment, and that includes a six thousand square foot Arvest Bank along with their parking and drive-through lanes. The discussion at subdivision committee a few weeks ago really revolved around, uh, two access areas. That is a reconstructed access that will be shared between Burger King and Arvest. We discussed a, a median proposal that's, uh, you can see to kind of help direct, direct traffic as you come in or exit the site. Uh, the commissioners asked for a detail of that median, and I think we eventually settled on a rollover curve as being the preferred method, so we've included that detail from the applicant in your staff report, and so we appreciate your comments on that. The driveway exit or drive-through lane exit for Burger King is remaining, um, since really only the north portion of their property is actually part of this proposal, so that is allowed to remain, but we did ask that they try to round that off to discourage the left turns out of this site because of potential conflicts with people coming out of the main driveway, and they were able to, uh, work that out with the property owners, and have shown that on the site plan as well. Uh, they've shown cross-access to the west, and that is at the northwest corner, the corner of the Arvest property for future connectivity as, uh, property is on Township, uh, redeveloped in the future. For street improvements, Township was recently, uh, improved and sidewalks were constructed by the City of Fayetteville, so street improvements would be a five-foot sidewalk on College Avenue, and just any repair to any damaged sidewalk in addition of street lights where necessary. Uh, staff is recommending approval of large-scale development with eighteen conditions of approval. There are three determinations to be made by the commission. The first is determination of street improvements. As I mentioned, it's simply sidewalks and street lights along, uh, College Avenue. Item two is determination of, of access from College Avenue. As I stated, the existing two curb cuts, one that used to serve the car lot and one that currently serves Burger King, is being, uh, reduced to one common access, so there will be a, a great improvement as far as, um, access to and from the site. The drive's been shifted down, it's about two-hundred-and-twenty-seven feet from the intersection. It used to be maybe about a hundred-and-fifty feet or less from the intersection for this piece of property, so that's a great improvement, um, and to get all the attorney movements into a, a central location. And then the, uh, shifting of the exit drive-through lane for Burger King, as they've shown on the site plan, and the construction of the rollover median and signage interior to the property for those exits. And then item three is determination of commercial design standards. Fully support the, uh, proposal for this bank. Feel that it completely meets our minimum design standards, and I think all the other conditions are ones you will be familiar with, so please ask if you have questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fulcher. Is the applicant present? Would you state your name for the record? Tell us about your project.
Good evening, I am Dirk Thibodeau with Greer Rock. I'm representing the owner, Arvest. Uh, we have received staff's comments. We agree with them, so we would just request your approval on this.
Thank you, Mr. Thibodeau. Is there anybody here from the public to speak to this issue? This item. Seeing none, gonna close public comment and bring it back to the commission.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Chesser?
Um, question for staff. Jesse, uh, so the, looking at the plan, there'd be a no-left-turn sign where it's being indicated by the city engineer right now. Oh, he's moved it. Down here? Right there? Somewhere there?
That's correct.
And that's been totally accepted by Burger King as we discussed? There's an extensive discussion about this at subdivision.
Correct, yes, we've given it to, I've given it to Arvest. Arvest has passed along to Burger King, and, um, I'm told that...
That's acceptable. And the roller curb, curb will be con, concrete and painted yellow, correct?
Concrete, okay, yes.
Okay. Um, we had a lot of discussion, those were the main points at subdivision. Um, I'm pretty satisfied with it, and I, I know there'll be discussion, but given that, I'm going to move, let's see, this is a, an approval?
Yes, sir.
Approve LSD twelve-dash-four-one-one-seven, finding in favor of staff determinations in numbers one, two, and three, and finding in favor of other staff conditions of approval.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Chesser, and a second from Commissioner Cabe. Is there further discussion? Mr. Gardner, would you call the roll?
Cabe?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Chesser?
Yes.
Honchul?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Winston?
Yes.
Bunch?
Yes.
Noble?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Our next item of business is conditional use permit one-two-dash-four-one-two-two for Root Elementary. Mr. Honchul, can you give the staff report?
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, the request is for a property located at fifteen-twenty-nine East Mission Boulevard, that's, uh, Root School. Uh, is owned P one institutional, and the request is to relocate one, uh, temporary modular structure that is currently being used as a temporary classroom. They have little public schools, and Root Elementary hold a current, uh, existing use permit, uh, that allows that, uh, structure, uh, through July thirty-first, and they are permit, uh, that allows that, uh, structure through July thirty-first, and they are seeking additional approval for relocating that behind their building, um, until July thirty-first, twenty fifteen.
Thank you, sir. Is, uh, the applicant present? Could you state your name for the record and tell us about your project?
Sure. Jonathan Ely, I'm with Craft and Toll, representing the school district tonight. I've also got David Day with the school district. Um, we've reviewed the conditions of approval and agree with them. If you got any questions, we'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Ely. Uh, is there anybody here from the, the public to speak to this issue? Seeing none, close public comment and bring it back to the commission.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Cabe?
I move that we approve conditional use permit one-two dash four-one-two-two.
Second.
We have a motion to approve from Commissioner Cabe, and a second from Commissioner Honchul. Is there further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Chesser?
Just wondering if Mr. Cabe's approval includes staff recommendations of approval? Hmm.
There are five standards.
Duly noted, yes.
So you, you move to approve the condition, you said with, uh, condition that the staff's conditions are bad?
When did these really straightforward motions get so difficult?
Yes, that's what I mean.
We have a.
All of them.
And a second?
No, I still second.
Uh, further discussion? Mr. Garner, would, would you call the roll?
Cabe?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Chesser?
Yes.
Honchul?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Winston?
Yes.
Bunch?
Yes.
Noble?
Yes.
Motion carries.
That concludes our agenda, do we have any announcements?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Hoskins?
I have a question for staff. Once upon a time, not too long ago, a project came across, came through the commission that, uh, was properly by the Parks Department about, uh, concerning the, uh, parks fees, updated parks fees. It's my understanding that since that came across the commission's desk, staffs had a chance to take a look at that again, and found that the numbers the commission looked at had been, I think, significantly changed. Can you, uh, update us on that, and will the commission be seeing that again?
You know, Commissioner Hoskins, I don't know the, I don't know anything about that.
About Andrew?
Haven't, I haven't heard that at all.
Nobody knows anything? Oh, good.
Probably talked to the Parks Department, Allison Jumper, the, the park planning superintendent.
Okay. All right.